Because we don't have mics in front of us, we're all gonna have to speak louder than normal. So we have this.
Right, that includes the audience.
Audience as well as the commission.
Yeah. You need to speak very loud.
So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the special June 1st meeting of zoning commission. Before we begin our first order of business, I'd like the commissioners and staff to introduce themselves, starting at my extremely right place.
Louise Provan-Talone.
William Cunningham.
Brian Skinner.
Bruce Chaputsky.
Jeff Cadell.
Alan Wyman, City Planner.
And as always, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Nancy King, our secretary, who does a great job of recording the minutes for this commission, so thank you. I'd also like to remind everyone in attendance at the moment that there is a 10 o'clock curfew that is in effect for this meeting. Before we start our public hearing, I just want to read a statement that I made before to clarify tonight's meeting a little bit. Since ladies and gentlemen, before we proceed with tonight's public hearing, I would like to clarify the reason for this special meeting. The sole purpose for tonight's meeting is to determine if the site plan application before us meets the zoning regulations for the city. Any other concerns pertaining to the developer should be directed to the city council, which is presently conducting business in the council chambers. Okay. First order of business, or our only order of business, is our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, public hearing application 2195, site plan for Unified Downtown Development Project, portion of Phase One for mixed-use building with 100 dwelling units, 23,000 square feet of non-residential space, and 230 worth parking spaces at 151 201 Main Street, assesses map, 26 block C, C3 BD1 Downtown Business Zone Renaissance Downtown at Bristol LLC.
Thank you, Commissioner Chaputsky. And then before we start the public hearing, I want to ask Commissioner Provan-Talone if she will read the protocol for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, you need to identify which alternate arrow you see on your hand.
Commissioner Squittoro will be sitting on, will be the alternate. It sits on this.
All right, I'm ready to read the public hearing protocol. On 12 steps, bear with me while I read them. Step one, secretary will read the description of the application into the record. Two, staff will identify for the record any correspondence associated with the application. Three, the applicant and his or her representatives will present the application. Four, during the presentation, the commission and its staff may ask the applicant and/or his representative questions about the application. Five, after the applicant has completed his or her presentation, the hearing will be opened up to any member of the public who wishes to speak about the application. A, those who wish to speak in favor of the application will be heard from first. B, those who wish to speak against the application will be heard from next. Six, because the public hearing is being recorded, if you wish to speak, you will need to come, go to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and then make your comments. Your comments should be specific to the application before the commission. Any questions that you want the applicant to answer, you should be directed to the chair of the commission, who will keep track of all the questions, and then ask the applicant to respond to each of them later in the public hearing. Seven, after everyone from the public who wishes to speak has spoken, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond to any public comments and to answer the questions the public has asked. Eight, after the applicant has finished with his or her responses, the public will again be given the opportunity to speak. However, in the second round of public participation, only those people who spoke the first time will be allowed to speak again. Nine, after the public has finished speaking, staff will be given an opportunity to comment on the application. Ten, after the applicant, the public, and the staff have finished speaking, the commission will close the public hearing by a motion, second, and vote. However, if the commission feels that it needs additional information, it can vote to continue the public hearing to another meeting. Eleven, after the public hearing is closed, the voting members of the commission will discuss the application and its merits. Finally, twelve, a motion, second, and vote of the commission is required for an approval or denial of this application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, application 2195.
Mr. Chairman, if we may, there's one and only one item of correspondence, excuse me, associated with this application you have in your packets this evening. It is the first set of staff comments dated May 26, 2015. This is the first and only review that the staff has conducted on the plans that were submitted as part of the application. So you have the, you have those comments, certainly as the public hearing proceeds. I'll try to answer any questions you might have about any of the comments that our office made or any other office made. For the moment, that's the only thing of correspondence that you have.
What do you have?
Good evening, Charlie Collins, representing Renaissance Downtown's offices at 111 North Main Street. First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for taking this meeting. We feel this is a very important project for our city, so once again, thank you for your time and consideration in making this a foundation. With me tonight is Nick Schwartz from CHA, and he's going to be walking you through the revisions of the plan. There are some major ones that, once we get down into it, we feel are fairly simple. What do you have in front of you this evening? It is a 106,000 square foot mixed-use building, 21,000 square feet of non-residential space on the ground floor, 100 residential units. It sits on 4.1 acres, about 250 parking spaces. It is our intention tonight to keep this as simple and as concise as possible, so I would be happy to answer any direct questions that you had for me. With that said, I'd like to turn over to the next.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, members of the commission. We appreciate your time, as Charlie mentioned. What I'd like to do first-
Do you need me to press over?
Sure thing. My name is Nick J. Schwartz. I work for CHA Consulting out of Rocky Hill, Connecticut.
And add the where is the address? How about the parking lot?
The firm's address.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
It's 41, please.
What I'd first like to do is kind of go over what the commission had approved back in 2013. As a result of a year and a half on the process, the last time that we were before the board, we had two buildings, Building A and Building B. Building A was a four-story of 103 years of building. Building B was four to five stories, based on where you were on the site, had 138 units and approximately 21,468 square feet of retail space. There were two public spaces, the mews, which was a pedestrian thoroughfare between Building B and Building A on the north side of the site. And then there was the piazza, which was the western portion of the open area behind Building B. At that point in time, the parking was 338 spaces. As a result of the current program, you'll notice that a lot of the things stayed very much the same. Building B is still in the same location, although it's a bit smaller. We have 100 units, three to four stories, and there's approximately 21,310 square feet of commercial space. We still have the public space, both the mews and the piazzas, but none of that has changed. And then we are looking at 250 proposed parking spaces. So this is what the current program looks like, where we have Building B. You have Depot Street, which is in the same exact alignment. You have the improvements along Riverside Avenue. You have the improvements along Main Street. This is the mews. Building B of Building A was currently, was previously right here. And then there was a parking lot here. And then there was a larger reconstructed parking area over in this portion of the site. So with the reduction in square footage for Building A, this is the only area that we need to be able to support parking for the project. So what's the, what's the program for Building, Building B? First floor, which is shown here, is all commercial and retail. The second floor is residential, and then the third and fourth floors are residential. It's four stories. It would be three stories on the back end here and four stories down below, very similar to the same look and feel that we had with the original Building B, where you had the four and five story split based on the grade as it goes up. The footprint right now is approximately 26,595 square feet. There's, again, 100 units with a little more than 21,300 square feet of retail commercial space. There we go. Apologize. This just kind of shows what the typical unit configuration is within the second story, third, and fourth. There are a mix of single bedroom, two-bedroom, and studio apartments. So that's what's, what's available for sale. And this is what the corner of the project would look like. This is Main Street. Riverside Avenue is right here. This looks at that, that prominent corner and kind of gives you a feel for what the materials selection is going to be, and also what the, what it's going to look like, where you've got your, your base level, your mid-level, and then your, then your cap for the, for the top. Just kind of, what I'd like to do is just kind of run through some of the site plan items that changed from the original, so that way you can kind of get a feel for both the differences that we may see between the plan set in front of you and here. Again, we've been continually working through the process and looking to address the comments that were provided by staff at the beginning of last week. So some of these things are going to be a little bit different than the application. We completely understand that until you see them, you don't know if they've actually changed. So, but this is the passive thing, so, and really, we want to gain the commission's comments on any of these things, so we can effectively integrate them into our next submission. So parking. We have, as previously, we have 20 spots, both parallel parking and then some reverse angle back-end parking along Depot Square, Depot Street. There's 20 spaces there. We have 14 spaces available along Main Street, and a majority of that is reverse back-end parking. Again, this was, a lot of this was discussed at the original approval, and we're not changing any of that. We're still looking at, at those two items and still looking to provide those in those locations. The thing that did change was, again, we had previously a large area of parking over here to accommodate the residential use. Since the residential use has been reduced on-site, we only need 216 spaces, and that is, contains this little lot here, which has about 24 spaces. And then the larger lot up near kind of looks at the, at the, just as a reminder, you know, you may say, okay, well, why do we have all of this space? Why can't we use some of this over here? Well, we need to maintain a 500-foot radius for the parking, so that way it's, the walk is no more than 500 feet to the first, furthest parking space. And, and we comply. So these are at 492 feet. So we do comply with the letter of the regulation in the zoning requirements for parking. When you look at the parking required, there's approximately 249 required. So when you start to do the math, and I know this was a comment that was levied on the, on the plan, and it was absolutely correct, there were a lot of different numbers on there. But the current numbers and the correct numbers are, there is approximately 21,310 square feet of commercial space that's broken down, so there's a little over 5,400 square feet of restaurant space. So when you start to do that math, you need 249 spaces total. And what we've provided between the parking lot, what we're calling the main parking lot, Depot Street, and then the 14 spaces along Main Street is 250. Drainage plan. So not really anything changed with respect to drainage along Main Street, Riverside, anything in the mews, anything along Depot Street. In this area, we had a stormwater system, a pipe stormwater system before. We currently have that. The way that the site drains is, this is high, this is high, this is high, and along the mews, this is high. So we're draining back towards the middle of the, of the parking lot, and we're picking it up with a system of catch basins and stormwater. The one thing that changed a little bit from the last application is this was previously drained, and in order to get the parking to fit within the required distance and area, this was added as parking. It's a curved area. I know that was a comment that the, the, the department had had about making sure that, you know, you contain the runoff, and we have. We went ahead and looked at this from a curved section. It drains from north to south, and it's picked up by two basins and connected to the stormwater system along Depot Street. Does anybody have any questions? Now, I know that it made this parking lot looks a little bit different than the ones that were under play. If you look at it before, previously, it was more aligned vertically here, north to south. And when you start to look at it from a functional standpoint, this made a lot more sense. It was actually less pavement, less disturbance, less area, and you got the same or a few more spaces. Utility plan, as you can see, this is very busy, and absolutely nothing changed on the utility plan. We still have all of the same water-sanitary sewer connections, water and sanitary trunk lines, electric and comm utilities that go down the mews. The only difference between this plan and the previous plan is that the utilities for future Building A here have been subbed out in this location, past the mews, and then placed a cap underneath it. Everything else has stayed the same. So I know that there are some questions on water flow, and for, for that, we'll certainly get in touch with the water department, but from, from the standpoint of the project, nothing's changed. I mean, we're going to reduce potential flow in this area based on the reduction in overall units and overall commercial space. So there were a couple of comments that we thought, you know, are a very, very important part of the zoning process and important part of the, the counts. Building, the build-to-line counts, the floor area ratio calculations, and then the building fenestration calculations. So the build-to-line. There was some confusion on the plans and some clerical errors that were wholly CHA's responsibility. Those have been taken care of. Currently, 100% of the building face along Main Street, and Riverside Avenue is contained within the 25-foot build-to-line. The 10-foot build-to-line is always a little bit more problematic, a little bit more challenging. Along Main Street, 123, 123 out of the 185-foot frontage. I apologize, I've got these reversed. This should be the Riverside calculation, where you've got 123 feet out of the 185-foot frontage. That equates to 66%. And then along Main Street, there's 274 feet of building face. 170 of that is within the 10-foot build-to-line. So that, that equates to 62%. The floor area ratio calculations, this came up before. Based on the proposed use and proposed need, basically this heavy dash line that I'm kind of outlining here goes down, comes back up through here, and then comes back up. That area is 4.1 acres, okay? The way that the floor area ratio calculation is, is constructed, it's the total square footage of the building over the total square footage of the site. So there's, there's two floor area ratio calculations, both with parking and without. Without parking, the building itself is like at 1.4, 1.6. With the parking, we just need the 0.6. We just need the 0.6 requirement. And there's not much flexibility to go any larger or any smaller. Again, this is, you know, on the proposed idea that the items that were included in the site were the items that were included to support the project, based on parking and based on the ability to access the site, access the parking, and access the building. Building B fenestration calculations. This goes down, and this is some new information we got today. We look at the first floor of the glazing versus the total square footage of the first floor building face. There is approximately 70%, 69.8% along the Main Street side. And then on the River, Riverside Avenue side, there's a little more than 70%. So those are, those exceed the minimums for fenestration along Main Street and along Riverside within the zone. And, you know, we've, we've been going through the question, the comments as we've been updating the drawings, realizing that you don't have updated drawings in front of you, and to be quite honest with you, my intent was not to bring updated drawings to set before the commission, because I don't believe that would do anybody any good. You know, so if you have questions, I'm available, happy to discuss anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some questions, mostly for clarification again, to note to the commission, we have not actually seen revised drawings, so I'm kind of doing this on the fly, and I recognize that it will be revised plans submitted and reviewed by staff. Mr. Schwartz, you indicated that the, that 60% of the building was at or in front of The drawing that I have, and maybe I'm misreading it, has almost 100% of the building at or in front of the build-to-line. I'm not sure where the 60% came from.
Well, there's, there's, there's two lines on the-
Right.
There's the 10-foot build-to-line, and there's, and there is the 25-
No, I understand that. And the drawing that I'm looking at, unless I'm misreading it, that virtually along the Main Street side of the building, virtually all of the building, except for one small portion, is at or in front of the build-to-line. So that could seem to me that the percentage is greater than the 66%. I'm not sure how you're calculating it.
Again, these are, you know, when, when we've gone through and updated the plans, these are the plans that I have in front of me that may not, that may be a little bit different than what we have-
Well, has the, has the building been moved?
Minor, very minor, yep. Okay, not, not even, but I think that is consequential enough to do that.
I, again, I, it seems to me that as I, as I look at the plan, the building, and again, unless the building has shifted from where it was shown initially, it appears that along Riverside Avenue, virtually all of the building is at or in front of the build-to-line, and most of it, certainly more than 60-something percent of the Main Street side is at or in front of the build-to-line. Again, we'll obviously see revised drawing, but I'd really suggest you go back and take a look at that, because I think the number is, is higher than what you, than what you've shown here.
Along, along Riverside, what you see there? Yes, it, it appears on the plan as though it's, it's right on the line or right before the line. When you look at it in a, in a blown-up CAD drawing, these are-
But this is the drawings that we're getting to, to look at, so-
I completely understand.
So if, if you're telling us that the building is in fact set back or in backup or in front of the line, I think then what it's going to necessitate is that at critical points along the entire building front, you're going to need to identify what the setback is. Otherwise, we're basing it on, I see a dash line, I see a building, the front line that appears to sit on the dash line, which would lead me to believe that it's at that line. If it's behind the line, then I think we're not going to be able to tell that unless you provide us either a much larger, more detailed building footprint of, of this for the purposes of checking the calculation, or you're going to have to provide us a whole series of distances, setback distances along the street furniture. Either way, but, but in the absolute, the number seems to, that number seems to be low. It appears that you're in greater performance than even what you showed. I'm a little bit confused as to the floor area ratio based on no parking. The regulation is pretty clear that the floor area ratio is based on the area of the site. Am I correct that there's a building lot associated with this, with this first phase? 4.1?
Yes, 4.1 acres.
Okay, so the floor area ratio is supposed to be based on the total square footage of the building versus the total lot area, which is right there. So that's, so you're saying that-
So you've got 106,716 square feet for the building.
Okay.
You divide that by 4.1 acres, which is square feet, is 178,878 square feet.
Okay.
Then you get 2.6.
All right. Which, okay. Well, but, but you've mentioned a couple of times that, that it's higher, the parking is not included, but the parking is, the parking being on the lot or not being on the lot, it is, is moot, because the calculation is based on the amount of square footage of the building versus the overall site, regardless of whether there's parking on it or not.
We were, we were consciously keeping our calculations consistent with the previous application.
Right, but, right. But you understand, at the time of the original approval, this was one big site.
I do.
So I, I'm not sure that you can make that comparison directly. It seems to me, at least, and it's up to, coming up to the commission, that the floor area ratio, if there's now a lot as a result of a subdivision of this parcel, then the floor area ratio is going to be calculated against that lot.
Yes, and that's-
Okay.
That's the proposal. This, this is the proposed subdivision-
Right.
Of, of the, there's actually a lot line adjustment-
Right, okay.
Between three lots, you know, Lot C3, Lot C, and 2C.
Okay.
So, or C2, C3, C4.
But the fact that this parking or not parking is, is not relevant to the calculation.
Understood.
I just want the commission to-
If I could just clarify, in this instance, the only number that matters is the FAR as it relates to the lot, which would include the parking.
Right.
In the interest of trying to remain as consistent as we could with the previous application, that additional information was included, but what really matters here is the number with the lot.
Okay. I think, I think for the sake of clarity, I think when you provide the information of the next round of drawings, I think, just give us the FAR as defined in the zoning regulations. The issue about it being a single lot at the time of the original approval is kind of a moot point now, because there is a definitively defined, that's not redundant, lot on the, on which this development is proposed to sit. I think that'll, that'll kind of clear that issue up.
Absolutely.
Okay. And you'd indicated a couple of times that the parking needs to be within 500 feet of the building entrances, and you complied with that. Again, this may be a function of the previous approval versus the current request. The 500-foot requirement came into play because it was all one lot previously, some of which, if, if this project is approved and goes forward, the applicant won't have control over. In this instance, again, you'd have a lot that's been defined through a subdivision, so that- In this instance, again, you have a lot that's been defined through a subdivision, so that the 500-foot distance between all the parking and the building also becomes a moot point. As long as it's on your lot, it could be 1,000 feet away if that's within the bounds of this lot. So, and, and, you know, if you can get it all within 500 feet, that's great, but if it's not a requirement.
Well, I think where it came up to us as a requirement, again, it's kind of a carryover from the previous application, it was always our preference to remain within 500 feet, and if we go beyond 500 feet, then it becomes a problem with the floor area ratio because we were including more land.
Right, but as with the previous issue of the FAR, because this is now on a separately-defined lot, that issue becomes moot in terms of having to stay within 500 feet. So if there's parking, I mean, if it's all within 500 feet and the developer chooses to impose that as part of their own development, that's fine, but if there were, let me put it this way, when we as staff are looking at this plan, we're not going to measure in this instance whether or not the parking is within 500 feet, because that's not a requirement when it's all on your own lot. So, again, if the developer chooses to impose that, self-impose that, that's fine. And the last thing that I've commented on at this time in terms of what's been presented is, I received earlier today a preliminary copy of the, of the drawing that Mr. Schwartz showed you that showed the, the building penetration along both Riverside and, and Main Street, and based on my calculations, independent of theirs, is I come up with essentially the same percentage. The requirement is that between 2 feet above the building foundation and 10 feet above the building foundation, 65 percent of that area along the entire building frontage has to be glazing, doors, windows. In both the case of Main Street and Riverside Avenue, the percentages that I calculated based on what they had submitted appears to be in the 70 percent range, so they, they do appear to meet that requirement. Again, once I get an official submission as part of the, the next round of drawings, we'll confirm that, but that appears to be, that issue appears to have been addressed. And that's all the questions that I have at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else that, any questions before we open it to the public? No, go ahead. Go do that.
All right, then. I guess at this time what we'll do is we'll open the meeting open to the public. As Commissioner Provenzano stated before, we're going to have two rounds. We're going to ask those people who wish to speak in favor of the application to come up first. So we're going to ask you to come up here and speak kind of loudly because we have a kind of a different setup here. Then we're going to ask those people that are against the application to come up next. We will then give the applicant a chance to respond on, on anything, and then we'll have a second round. If you haven't spoken in the first round, you're ineligible to speak in the second round. So therefore, at this point, if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak in favor of the application, would you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please? Okay. If there's anyone who wishes to speak against the application, would you please come up and state your name and address for the record?
Michael Dudko, 116 Lewis Road, D U B K O. I know this is part of the Renaissance project and this might be a determination next door. Originally, I'm basing my opposition to the zoning changes. I don't think you're going to vote on this. This is just a preliminary plan that was presented, and it's conditional, I hope it's conditional. Across the street was originally, I think it's still part of the master plan, then it's still commercial property. I believe that it should always remain commercial property across the street. A commercial zoning, and this might involve a variance, and that's why I have opposition. I don't believe in the mixed, mixed residential housing going across the street. Originally was commercial property even 100 years ago. I'll take that back. It was mixed even 100 years ago on North Main Street and such. Okay. I, I'm surprised that, I think the BDC probably made this a requirement that Renaissance had to present tonight. It just seems a waste of time. I just want to get on record that I oppose this, that it's, that it should be a commercial zone across the street for the, for the city of Bristol. And I think that still is what the master plan has as the. As I said, I'm surprised at the, the, the sequence. We don't even know if, if our city council is, is going to back any kind of plan, any further plan. And to me, it seems to be how this is done, I know in the past experience how, how the city approaches steps, sometimes it's a waste of time, but I oppose this based primarily that I'd like that Cross the Street domain as complete commercial zoning property.
Thank you, Mr. Dudko. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the application? Would you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Sean Ruiz, 53 Lancaster Road in Bristol. I'm not exactly positive what the density changes are for the lot over here. I know urbanism projects typically are high-density projects, and I know there's been some changes to the zoning over there, but I haven't been able to find out particularly what. So I'm just wondering, what, what is the zoning going to be for the special permit? What is the density and how does that translate into Lang's terms? Because I don't really know that much of how it works. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Would you like to respond, Charlie?
I want to see if anybody else.
Yes, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else, excuse me, is there anyone else who would like to speak against the application? Would you please come up and state your name and address for the record? Charlie, would you like to respond at all?
Sure, I'll, I'm just trying to take that one at a time, just beginning with Mr. Dudko's comments. In relation to the mixed use, this was a project that was developed as part of a master plan, a master plan that received a special permit approval for a unified downtown development project that included 1,000 residential units, 73,000 square feet of retail, 113,000 square feet of commercial office space, and 125 room hotel. The proposal that's before you tonight is the use of that overall master plan. The overall master plan has changed contrary to 100 reports in the, in the press that the project has been scaled back. That is in fact not the case. This is just the first component in, in realizing the overall master plan. To Mr. Ruiz's comments, the density changes in this project, again, when you look at it as, as a piece of the whole, the density has not changed. The zoning that was in place previous to Renaissance's arrival had no density maximum for downtown. When we went through the zoning amendments, there was no density maximum established, so when we submitted and subsequently approved it to unified downtown development project, there was no density requirement. But just to answer your question, I believe we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 units per acre. Under the, the guise of the, please ask.
Thanks, Charlie. Okay, I don't think there's anyone else, so we'll do the second round again, and we had no one in the first round that wanted to speak in favor of it. We had two people in the second round that wanted to speak against it. Mr. Dudko, would you like to speak to?
I, I just ask the, the board here, has it been already changed to a mixed-use zoning reg? He mentioned that that has been done.
Yeah, that was, that was the original, that was the original concept.
Yes, and also. I, I disagree with the concept. Has it, has, has that, is that firm? What is the zoning right now?
The zoning of the property is in a BD1 zone. That is the zone, that is the downtown business zone. This property and a number of properties in the immediate vicinity of Main Street and North Main Street are in a BD1 zone. The BD zone since 1990, which is when these current regulations were adopted, allowed for, in the BD zone, allowed for a mix of residential and commercial and office and similar kinds of uses. So in that regard, this, this particular development is proposing uses that are permitted and have been permitted in the zone since 1990. Renaissance came, when they initially proposed this project, they came in under the regulations, there were some amendments made to the regulations, but it didn't change the zones, didn't change the concept of the zone. They came in under provision, allowed it to, and not just them, but anybody with a certain parcel size to come to the commission and present a master plan for the development of a specific parcel plant. So that's what was done. But the zoning itself has been a, actually the downtown business zone goes back to the 1980 zoning regulations. I'd have to go back and look to see if that allowed for a, a mix of uses, but certainly since 1990, these regulations, long before Renaissance showed up, these regulations allowed mixed uses in the downtown business zone.
I'd just like to reiterate my, my, that, that, I think that whole square, though, within the last 20 years before it was demolished, there were, there were no residential properties on there, right?
Correct.
So it was a commercial block. So my, my belief is that it should remain for the future, that we knocked it down while it was all commercial, what should go back there and be replaced should be all commercial. But I, I understand what you're saying about regulations, but, but at one time in 1970, when Grand Way and, and Sage Allen came in, I can't remember what, what other anchor stores, that was going to be just a full commercial square, and I just would like that to, to remain, to, to, to go back to that.
Charlie, would you like to?
Just want to say that I'm opposed to the project. I'm opposed to high-density development in the downtown, which really, anything that's going to have 60 units per acre or more will dramatically change the character of the downtown if we continue to follow that pattern. Right? You know, with one building, it doesn't seem like a lot, but once you start building the trans oriented development, you start implementing new urbanism project, it's going to spread. And the downtown of Bristol, it won't be the same as it is now, it'll be radically transformed, and it will be irreversible. The character of Bristol will be forever changed. And I don't think the residents of Bristol are aware of that.
So where do we stand right now? Where?
Well, you have the first set of staff comments, as I know at the beginning of the public hearing. Obviously, there are a number of items on this list that either haven't been addressed or we have not seen revised plans. You have, as you know, this is a site plan, and your jurisdiction is limited to, you know, what's being proposed meets the zoning regulations. Or does it not? And obviously, if it doesn't meet the regulations, then you can't approve it, but like any application for site plan, you get, you have a period of time within which you have to act, but you're not required to, you have 65 days. And again, in that regard, this is not any different than any, than any other site plan application. So the date of receipt of this application was in your meeting, your regular meeting in May, May 13th. So you have, by law, you have 65 days from that date to make a decision on this application, which would take you to July 17th. Your next regular meeting, on the presumption that we're not going to get another review in, well, we haven't got revised plans, but your next regular meeting is next Wednesday the 10th. So if you were to continue this to your July meeting, your July meeting is July 15th. You're still within a 65-day period for a decision on this application that would give the applicant sufficient time to revise, finish the revisions, get them back to staff, get a second review, necessary, and a third review, whatever it may take, with the expectation that at July meeting, you'll have to make a decision. If you don't make a decision, for some reason, that meeting, if you want to go beyond that, you need the applicant's consent to do so. But at the moment, you can, you can go right to July, July 15th without the applicant's concurrence. Just to refresh your memories, you do have that same night, three applications for one project, that's the Bristol Hospital parking lot. We did receive two applications today. Today was your filing deadline. June, probably this probably be scheduled into July. We did receive the two applications for the O'Connell School Conversion Project, special permit and site plan. So you may have, you, if you continue this to your July meeting, you could have six applications, but you're looking at three projects that would require your, your consideration then.
What do you think? I think that we should continue to July 15th.
Agreed.
That gives everybody a chance.
I do one thing. I still, I am still, yeah. When you guys went over the FAR calculation, you did denote an area between the Depot Street and Piazza that was not to be included? Now, is that the old McDonald's portion, and then in addition, some additional land that's being carved out? Because I just, I just, if you're going to be submitting new plans, I'd like to see that denoted at least so that I could, because I was trying to follow and I was, I couldn't really tell, obviously, we have an older set of plans.
Well, no, one of our staff comments was that they need to include on this drawing the property lines that were established as a result of the subdivision of the land.
That's all I wanted to, I just wanted to know what was going on with that land.
Because, right, because as you, as you look at the plan, it looks like the previous drawing in the sense that, remember the previous set of plans, it was all one, at the time, it was one big piece of property. It's since been subdivided. The subdivision lines need to be shown on this drawing. That would make the consideration of the floor area ratio and the penetration and the, all that stuff more readily easy to check because we'll know where the lot lines are, or we can't really tell that off in these drawings.
Any other questions? Any more to change the motion?
You all got to speak up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Will we have to close the public hearing?
No, no, no. He's continuing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on application 2195 to our next meeting scheduled July 15th, 2015, please.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Rule call, vote. Commissioner Scrittoro?
Yes.
Commissioner Provenzano?
Yep.
Commissioner Klitsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, Charlie. See you in July.